Over fifteenth, I'd like to call the planning board on town of Cohasset to order alphabetical roll call, please.
Clark Brewer here.
Amy Glassmore here.
Kevin Hein here.
And Bill Schmidt, she here.
Attendees are noted and we know an attendee will not be attending, so we'll proceed. We have an A and R that is a carryover from the last meeting. If the town planner just wants to introduce that and provide just a very brief circumstances, how we ended up here, that might be helpful. And then we can introduce the applicants because there were some materials for which we had requested changes be made and brought forth and we have by mutual agreement been able to extend it to this meeting. So go ahead, if you, if you, if you may.
Sure. So the board last saw this application at your last meeting. The applicant is looking to divide into three lots. The board requested of the applicant last time to adjust the A and R plan to more clearly show the three lots that they are intending to create and they have submitted a new plan for your review.
Okay, great.
We got that emailed to us instead of being on the portal.
Correct. Yes.
Town council, Justin Proda is joining us this evening as well. And Justin, have you or are you taking a moment to look at those materials with regard to some of the issues that we had raised at the last meeting, some of which you had pointed out?
Yes, so that the change whereby the two parcels that were lettered and lot three are now identified as one lot and with frontage on the public way. That satisfies the issue that I raised that all the lots shown on the A and R plan have to have frontage on a public way. So that change does satisfy that element of the statute.
Okay, great. And for the applicants, Greg Morris, I see has joined us as a panelist. And Greg, if you could just introduce yourself and perhaps also provide the plan on, on show the plan after you introduce yourself and just describe the changes that were made between our last meeting and now.
Certainly. For the record, Gregory Morris, registered engineer, Morris Engineering. Putting a copy of the plan up now, you should be able to see that. I'm representing the property owner Van York Development and the applicant J. Stephen Bjorkland. It's an A and R application for three eighty-three, four oh five R South Main Street. Reviewing the plan here real quickly on the right-hand side of the page is South Main Street, which is a paved public street with access to utilities. There's an existing home on the property right here. The existing home would be taken down. The proposal here is to divide this property into three new lots. Lot one would be in the front right here. Lot two would be in the middle. And then lot three would be a new home at the rear of the property. It's the applicant's intention to come into the planning board with a common driveway application, which would utilize essentially the location of the existing driveway out here with some upgrades certainly to provide a common driveway access to these three lots. This is in the residence B zoning district. It requires a minimum of fifty feet of frontage. All three lots shown on this plan have that fifty feet of frontage. At the last meeting, town council made some recommendations with respect to how we were labeling lot three, which is the lot in the back here. We made those changes to the plan. As I think you just heard a minute ago, to satisfy his comments at that last meeting. We believe the plan's entitled to endorsement. Every lot has the minimum frontage on a roadway that's accepted in the town of Cohasset. And I'll turn it back over to you for questions or comment.
Thank you, Greg. Any board members have questions or comments? Birgit, do you want to start if you have any?
No, I don't. I don't have any. I, I would have been fine with the last one as well, but I, I see Justin's comments and that has been adjusted and so I'm still fine.
Okay, great. Any other board member? I appreciate the applicants coming back to us. Agreeing to do so and making the changes based on a pretty comprehensive discussion we had at the last meeting to take a, take care of what some people would describe perhaps as housekeeping, adding other people as more necessary items. Regardless, they've been made applicant has come forth with the changes and if we have no further discussion or questions for the applicant. Amy, will you be joining in a voting for this? And not for, will you be participating in voting for this A and R?
Yes.
Okay, so do I hear any motion in the absence of any questions or comments as to what's been put forth in front of us? Any motion from the board members?
I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R as, as modified.
Second.
Okay, having heard endorsement and second to endorse the A and R alphabetical roll call vote, please.
Clark Brewer, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Hein, I.
And Bill Schmidt, I.
The motion carries unanimously with attendees this evening and we appreciate the applicants again coming forth at this meeting and good luck with the project.
Thank you. We look forward to coming back with a application for a common driveway. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
We'll see you then. Thank you.
All right. Good to see everyone. I'll turn it back over to Carolyn.
Thanks for, thanks for tuning in, Justin. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
So I'm going to try to try and do this via my screen share, which I will do my best, or if not, Cassandra, you've, I think I emailed it to you, right?
Whichever you prefer.
Okay, well, where? Just looking. I'm not seeing the immediate option to screen share.
I don't know how it looks on your screen, but mine's at the bottom in the middle.
All right, so hang on a sec. See if I can get this.
Will you share the slides with us afterwards?
Sure. I can forward them to everyone.
Or has it, has anything changed in the wording and so on?
Sorry, what was that, Carolyn?
Are you seeing this?
I know.
That looks good.
All right. Try to do it as a
And this is completely different than the training that we're required to do every two years with that. If you, if you guess the wrong, wrong answer, it won't let you go on to the next.
Multiple choice exam that you go through. Yeah, this is it, this is different. Yeah, this does not count. I mean, it covers it covers, you know, the same material as the conflict of interest statute does. But Cassandra had asked me to do some training and so we offer it free free of charge every year to the town. And I think the last time I did an open meeting law training was actually in person at town hall. And I just remember it was a day absolute pouring rain. But and we were upstairs at the at the senior center. So and I don't think any of you were actually there unless you were also out in the Zoom world. Well, gee, Clark, that just tells me how excited you are to sit through this tonight.
No, I am. I am really, I'm really excited. And I'll be as active a participant, participant as necessary.
All right, perfect. So, um, you know, for those of you who have sat through a training with me before, you know, I like active participation because nothing is worse than sitting here and having someone just read slides to you. You can certainly do that yourselves. So please feel free to jump in here and, and ask any questions you have. We'll cover the open meeting law and the conflict of interest. But, you know, feel free to ask any questions you might have. The one thing I always have to say, however, is we've got to keep everything to hypotheticals. You know, this is not an opportunity to talk about, you know, real life examples or something that might be currently pending before the board or that is coming before the board at a future meeting. So or something that you saw happen, say, with the Board of Selectmen last week. So we'll keep it all to hypothetical situations. All right. So we'll start.
This is just Massachusetts. This isn't for the federal government.
No, this is not for the federal government, but as you see from this first slide, there's an awful lot of overlap between what's called the sunshine laws in Massachusetts and other states. May just be that we use a slightly different terminology or we might have slightly different timeframes built into the statute for different actions that we have to take. But essentially the open meeting law, the public records law and the conflict of interest law all combined in some way interact with each other to, you know, the idea being that we should, government should be performed in the light of day where taxpayers can see their appointed and elected officials at work and observe them in action. So, um, you know, the idea is that not, there isn't supposed to be secrecy or backroom deals being conducted, that type of thing. So let's just start with the very basics as to like, what is a meeting? I think this is something you guys are obviously very familiar with because you have meetings, you know, every other week. But in its, the, the definition of meeting under the statute is actually that it has to be a quorum of a public body. So we have to first and foremost have a public body. So planning board is clearly a public body, zoning board is clearly a public body, select board. But, um, you know, if the town manager has a working group to look into, you know, rewriting zoning bylaws or to look at capital projects or things like that. Those are not public bodies because they are, they are appointed by an individual who is not a public body himself or herself. So it has to be a quorum of your board. That's typically a majority unless a bylaw or charter provision determines that a quorum is otherwise, but for your purposes, your quorum is going to be any three of your members. And you have to actually have a discussion about something that is either pending before your board or is going to come before your board in order for it to really qualify as a meeting and a deliberation under the open meeting law. So of course, the best practice is always, you know, if the three, if there are three members of the board that should happen to run into each other somewhere just by chance, um, you are certainly allowed to attend social gatherings. You're allowed to attend members or other board meetings without having to post a meeting of the planning board. But what you need to refrain from is unless you have a meeting actually posted, need to refrain from either deliberating amongst a quorum of your board on anything that may be coming before you or may be pending before you. And the other idea is that you should avoid the appearance of any kind of a deliberation. So if we think back a couple of years ago, when there was a zoning bylaw task force or the zoning bylaw committee, it was probably possible that at times a quorum of the planning board may have also been present, say, for one of the public forums or the discussions while some bylaw changes were being discussed. It's perfectly fine for there to be a quorum of the planning board present with that other zoning bylaw committee. But you don't want to be start standing up and talking about changes to the common driveway bylaw, for example. Because now you are participating in a deliberation, you know, the, the bylaw that would ultimately come before the planning board. So the best practice would be attend that other meeting and just take it all in and listen or post a joint meeting of both bodies. So we got somebody else who wants some open meeting law training tonight. Maybe she, she might take the test for us at the end, Clark. So we get a lot of questions about subcommittees and working groups. And I hear frequently from folks that a subcommittee or a working group isn't really a public body. That is simply not true. And there's been some recent guidance that has come out in the form of determinations from the Attorney General's Office that as a general rule, if the parent body, if you were, creates a subcommittee, and if the parent body is subject to the open meeting law, that subcommittee is likewise also subject to the open meeting law. And if that subcommittee is going to report back to the parent body, all the more reason that it is subject to the open meeting law. We've covered that it doesn't include the attendance of a quorum of your board at another board's meeting or even like at a private gathering. So for example, if there was a retirement party for a police chief or a fire chief and everybody is showing up, doesn't matter if there's a quorum of every single town board present. You're not there to actually have a meeting and to deliberate about anything. You're there just really for a chance, social engagement. But don't be seen off to the side, you know, whispering with other board members about, you know, that A and R application that was just filed earlier in the day because now that would be a violation. So deliberation, I kind of just covered this. But it is any kind of communication amongst a quorum of the board, oral, written, or through any other kind of medium, including email. It includes social media. Anytime you communicate about something, some business that's within your board's jurisdiction to a quorum of your board, it constitutes a deliberation. And that deliberation should only occur in the context of an open meeting that has been posted. So as I was saying, it includes email communications, text messages, social media and serial communications. So some of the greatest offenses that I see, for example, is there'll be an email that is sent to the entire membership, say, of the planning board. If that email is a communication that says, there's going to be a snowstorm on Tuesday night. So, you know, back in the days when we actually met in person, you know, if there was a snowstorm and that that was somehow rather going to require that a meeting be scheduled or a meeting be rescheduled. You might send out an email to all of the board members saying Tuesday night's meeting is going to be canceled. Can everybody meet on Thursday instead? Can you meet at Thursday at seven? No, I can't meet Thursday at seven, but I can meet Thursday at six thirty. And it goes back and forth like that for a series of emails. You can have as many emails like that as you wish, and that does not violate the open meeting law. That's a specific exemption. You can also distribute any kind of materials for a meeting to all of your board members. So you get a copy of an A and R, you get a traffic study, a stormwater plan, whatever it happens to be. All of that can be sent through a single email to all board members without violating the open meeting law. But here's the difference. You can distribute, say, that traffic report to all of the board members and say, this is for our meeting next week. Have a good weekend. If you say attached is the traffic report for our meeting next week and based on the traffic counts that I'm seeing, there's no way in the world. I think we can approve this project unless, you know, the applicant does X, Y, Z to mitigate the traffic impacts. Now you've gone too far. Now you've actually expressed your opinion on something related to the project. You've done it outside of a public meeting. That's a violation of the open meeting law. So restrain yourself from any kind of comments like that. I often get people who will say, but I, yes, I sent an email to my, the entire board. But nobody responded to me. It doesn't matter. You don't need anyone to respond. The fact that you put your opinion out there to others is enough to constitute a deliberation outside of a public meeting. It includes serial communications. So sometimes a board member will say, well, just for the sake of argument, Kevin spoke to Amy. Amy spoke to Clark. Okay? Neither one of them spoke to a quorum of the board about something. But if Kevin spoke to Amy and Amy spoke to Clark and you all spoke about your common conversations or your thoughts on a project, now there are three of you through a serial conversation that have engaged in this discussion where perhaps one of you might have said, well, I was just talking with Clark and Clark thinks, Clark thinks the project is fine. I spoke with Amy. Amy doesn't see a way that she could approve the project. Now you are sharing that with other members of the board. And once you get to a magic number of three who have all exchanged that information, it's technically a violation of the open meeting law. Social media. Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin. I just saw your hand up.
Yeah. Hypothetical, but I think people will probably be able to understand the context. You know, let's say three or more planning board members are at an event. And if it's like the towns, if it's the towns, you know, dessert and pastry appreciation night, okay? You don't have to post a meeting for that. No one's going to put forth any opinions with regard to how good the pastries are or not and coffee and all that. All right. So the, the next hypothetical, say it's something that's put on by a quasi-town group regarding historical things in town. Okay. And historical properties or uses and three or more planning board members happen to be at this event and want to opine on it. And then the third example is say it's, say it's an event that's scheduled for input on future use in over the next twenty-five years for properties in town with regard to recreation, development. You know, green, green space use. You know, changes in climate, you know, adaption type things, yada, yada, yada. Three or more planning members are at that thing and we're maybe not like the second example I gave you where we're talking about historical things, but we're talking about perhaps future planned use of things. And we are planning board members. Do we have to post a meeting for something like that? If there's going to be three people there, I'm just trying to, I'm not trying to overanalyze this thing. I'm just trying to understand. We don't get into some murky waters here.
Those, those are all good questions. So I think everybody would agree, uh, you're going to the pastry, uh, you know, coffee and, uh, you know, employee appreciation night or whatever it is. Everybody can be there, just like, you know, you could be at a retirement party or, or whatever. That's all perfectly fine. No need to post a meeting. Provided, like I said, you're not off in the corner somewhere secretly discussing something that's on your agenda for, say, next week or next month. As to the other examples, the historical things or say historical use of historic structures or broader. You know, how do we increase recreational space or improve open space opportunities, that type of thing? I think it would depend on is there something that is truly going to come before the planning board? And that's related to that, you know, so for example, if we're talking about something like, you know, as we have seen what to do about town hall. You know, we have the historic portion of town hall and then the newer portion of town hall. If, if there was actually an application that was pending before the planning board or if it was very likely that we knew an application was going to be coming before the planning board because somehow or other proposed renovations or maybe even in addition to town hall was somehow rather going to trigger something under the bylaw that comes before the planning board. If there's something kind of more concrete like that, that you know it's likely to come before you, then my suggestion would be either refrain from talking about it publicly or post a meeting of your board at that public forum. So that if you do want to engage a little bit back and forth and you know that you're going to have a quorum of the planning board present, you've posted your meeting. So anything that planning board members happened to hear you say about what to do with historic town hall, that's all said, you know, in an open meeting. If, you know, the, the, the last example where, you know, kind of sounds a little bit more like, you know, sort of big, broad, like town planning goals, you know, like we need more recreational fields. We need more meaningful conservation areas where maybe we can actually string conservation parcels together for better connectivity and usage. We need to think of ways to expand access to the harbor, all of that. Those like big, broader discussions that don't have any kind of a concrete application that's either likely to come to the planning board or imminently before the planning board. I see no reason to post a meeting for that. You know, that just becomes more like a, a public discussion of what ifs or, you know, do we like more open space or do we want, you know, more, you know, build municipal buildings for all of our boards and town employees, that type of thing. I, I think I'd kind of qualify it that way. And one exemption that I, I should mention is town meeting. Town meeting is not subject to the open meeting law. So we see that a lot at town meeting that a whole bunch of different people stand up. I've seen you, Kevin. I've seen you, Clark. You know, everyone gets up. And you might, you, sure, from time to time, you might even be talking, you know, about something that, you know, is a zoning amendment, whether you're in favor of it or opposed to it, or whatever the case may be, clearly something that came before the planning board. Town meeting is, is one of those areas where since it doesn't apply to the open meeting law, any of the boards are allowed to, to discuss openly amongst a quorum of their board members. Does that answer your question, Kevin?
Yeah, that's, that's most helpful. Then, then why sometimes is there a meeting coincidental with town meeting or prior to or something like that? Is that just with matters specific to things that we've posted or revision of those provides an option?
Yes, I mean, especially the ones that are prior to town meeting, like, like the select board, for example, almost always posts a meeting, say, a half hour, forty-five minutes prior to town meeting because there might be something that they have literally waited until the night of town meeting to take a vote on a particular article. So they would have to post that separately because we're no longer, you know, because until town meeting is actually gavelled to order, they technically can't meet.
In the past, we, we've scheduled a meeting of the planning board if we haven't made a recommendation for some reason, information is last minute regarding a specific article on the warrant and we, we haven't made a recommendation for, for something and that's, that's that space is reserved for that last minute thing. We don't like to do the last minute thing, but occasionally it'll happen.
Yep. And that's a perfect example. Same thing. Sometimes it might be the same thing with advisory committee. So that's why you see a lot of boards with last minute meetings just prior to the start of town meeting. So one other thing I do want to just mention is social media. I know that there is an awful lot of activity on one, four, three and probably some other, you know, blogs or posts or webpages or chat rooms, whatever it may be. These could also be subject to the open meeting law and often we don't necessarily know. Uh, you know, if someone, if there's a, a hot button discussion, like let's say, everybody's talking about um, we'll pick on town hall, you know, what to do with town hall, you know, the folks who wanna just abandon it and move town hall offices someplace else, the folks who wanna see it preserved. There might, this might generate an awful lot of communication on social media. And I know it's hard for board members to uh, refrain from engaging in the social media, particularly when they realize that there's misinformation that is being spread out there. There's this tendency to wanna jump in and say, no, that's not what the latest proposal is. Or no, the, it isn't going to cost twenty million, it's gonna cost ten million. Or no, the footprint of the building is not gonna be that big, it's gonna be this big or what, whatever it might be. We wanna get in there, we wanna set the record straight. The best advice I can give you is refrain from doing so. You don't always know who out there in, you know, the cyber cloud or wherever everybody is, you don't necessarily know. If you jump in and say, folks, I wanna set the record straight here, um, you haven't got all of your facts quite up to date and you go on a, you know, a, a, a litany of correcting of the record and all of that. You don't know necessarily who that communication is reaching, but it could very well reach a quorum of your board, or it could be liked and passed on to other people. And then you have effectively serial communications from you to your entire board member. If you really cannot resist the temptation to jump in the fray and, and, and want to try to set the record straight, then the only thing I could say you could offer is to jump in and say, you know what, folks, it's great to see that so many people are interested in this topic. And I couldn't agree with you more that this is really important to the town. I do hope that you will all come to, you know, the planning board meeting on Tuesday night at six-thirty, because we're going to be discussing this and we'd really love to share uh, more up-to-date information um, and, and continue this dialogue in an open meeting. That at least lets people know that, you know, it, this isn't, uh, it isn't as though you're, you know, you as planning board members are not interested or turning a, you know, a deaf ear towards their concerns, but it's inviting them, drawing them back to, we can't talk about this with you in this setting, we need to, but we can talk about this with you in an open meeting, so please come on down. And then you'll find that maybe two people show up at your actual meeting, but you know, at least you reached two people.
Well, where these meetings are in Zoom, um, thousands of people could access uh, our, our discussion on, on a relevant uh, issue. Maybe not at the actual meeting, but it's still accessible information.
Yes, it is. That's true. They may not be available to participate live. But yes, they could watch it again later and say, oh, I, I learned a lot by listening in on that meeting, so. Um, so yeah, it, it could still be helpful. You're right. We've talked about this, so I'm gonna skip ahead. We have talked about this. Emails can also be sent by a non-member to a quorum, as long as the quorum does not reply. So um, let's take, for example, Cassandra sends uh, her staff report prior to every meeting. And um, the staff report gives you a good analysis of the applicable bylaw or statute and might even point out some issues or concerns that Cassandra sees. Now, that is certainly Cassandra perhaps um, expressing her opinion on a particular application. But it's perfectly fine for her distribute that to a quorum of the board because Cassandra's not a member of your board, so she's not subject to the open meeting law. We talked about, you know, individual, but what we wanna be sure of is Cassandra sends out the staff report to all of the board members and reminds you, you know, that you've got this A and R on the agenda for this evening and um, we've only got two days remaining um, on the timeline when we need to act. Board members should not respond to that email by replying all and asking Cassandra questions or saying, well, did the applicant make the changes that we requested? Or I still don't see that these lots have the requisite um, fifty feet of frontage. Don't engage it like that back. If you have a direct question you wanna ask Cassandra, that's fine. But you shouldn't be replying all so that all of the other board members um, are now attuned to the fact that you might see a particular concern with an application. Save it for the meeting. We have talked about social media, so I'm gonna skip that. I think we've covered this as well. One thing that folks have uh, have sometimes raised, however, in the context of social media or talking, sometimes folks will say, but I have a First Amendment right, freedom of speech to say whatever. It's like, well, yes, you do, but you've also as a, as a um, elected or appointed official, you're also subject to state law and the open meeting law, so um, you've always gotta temper your First Amendment right to make sure that you're conducting yourself um, in accordance with the open meeting law. So it might be perfectly fine, for example, um, in a certain setting, that you might go to another board meeting. Um, and you might say, you know, I am Carolyn Murray and I'm a member of the class at Planning Board Member, but I am here tonight speaking as an individual and as a taxpayer. I am not speaking on behalf of or in my capacity as a planning board member. That's how you get to express your opinion or state something um, to another board. Um, without sort of balancing your First Amendment and the open meeting law. Talked about that. So one thing, I know we're all, oh, sorry, Amy, go ahead.
In an instance where the cir- the circumstance arises that someone probably not knowing that they are actually uh, violating the open meeting law, what is a diplomatic way of indicating how, you don't wanna make your colleague feel uncomfortable, but you also realize that what they're doing is eroding the regulation. How, do you have any thoughts on what's the way of um, adjusting that?
One thing um, that I see almost daily, and this is, I, I'm not I'm not gonna pick on any particular town or any particular board. But almost daily, I get copied on emails that come from some town board. And I look at the email and realize every single member of a board has been copied on that email. And um, I think to myself, why do we do open meeting law training? This is, if folks are gonna send these emails, but it happens almost every day. I usually jump in separately, you know, I never reply all, I'll reply to the person who sent the email. And I typically will say, um, you know, that's a, that's a great point, or you know, I understand your concern or whatever it is. Please be mindful of the open meeting law and please do not engage with, you know, the other board members and save your comments for the next meeting where this will be discussed. I sometimes see other board members kind of policing each other too, where um, board members will periodically, you know, somebody sends something out and, and we are gonna assume that it was unintentional on their part when they sent it um, and said whatever they said. I've seen other board members who will sort of gently jump in and say, really appreciate your comments and, and this is very thoughtful. And I'm certain you, you don't want to violate the open meeting law, so um, I, I remind everybody, please do not reply all and um, let's save this conversation for our meeting next month. Um, that's about as diplomatic as I think we can be about it. And, and usually that nips it in the bud for about a week or so, and then the next email will come from somebody else.
Okay, but it, but it is a right to find a means of communicating uh, such that um, it stops the discussion. Because that seems to me to be the difficult part. It's one thing when you violate something and you know you're doing it. It's another thing that you, when you don't know you're doing it and you feel really like, I, I should be able to do this, right? And, and so I'm just trying to think about how do you get that, the outcome you want.
Right, sometimes just, you know, sending um, a response email saying, everyone, please be, please be mindful of the open meeting law and don't respond. Sometimes that's, that's enough. Or at least it's enough, rarely. But um, you know, one, one thing and I you know, Cohasset is relatively fortunate in that um, you don't get an awful lot of open meeting law complaints. I can, I can really only think of one in particular in the you know, four-ish years now that we have been town council. And that's pretty remarkable, and that either means you guys do a really, really good job of adhering to the law, or it just means you're really lucky that you don't have one of those people out there that likes to file open meeting law complaints. Um, you know, I could, I could give you two towns and the last names of two individuals in two towns right off the top of my head. And you could go onto um, you know, the Attorney General's website and you could see how many complaints and how many determinations are issued, because there, I kid you not, I have one client that every other week, there is an open meeting law complaint that is filed. And it isn't that they do such a terrible job of adhering to the open meeting law, it's sometimes their fault that they don't quite get it right. But sometimes it's just that there is one of those people who lives in the community who is one of these like self-proclaimed defenders of the open meeting law who um, would rather file an open meeting law complaint saying um, you know, you didn't put the Zoom link on your agenda for your meeting on September twenty-ninth. Rather than pick up the phone, call Cassandra and say, Cassandra, I noticed that the Zoom link isn't there, you should really fix it. So you're, you're lucky in that, you're, you're lucky in that sense that you're not, you know, dealing with what can sometimes feel like you know, a nuisance or harassment. But that doesn't mean you know, we're doing it correctly. It just means that somebody out there is not calling us on it. And, you know, I'm not the open meeting law police. You know, if I, if I see a violation or if I'm copied on something, I'm gonna gently try and diplomatically try to redirect somebody to remind them of it, but I'm not gonna go and report them and, and file a complaint, because that's, I don't think the most productive way to get through to somebody.
What's in for those people that so frequently um, complain, what's, you know, kind of their benefit of doing it, except for, you know, just having fun doing it?
Yeah, I do think that there's a certain um, sense of that. I had one gentleman um, in one community who, at, at least prior to COVID, he literally held the record of how many open meeting law complaints had been filed by him. And I think he saw it as a badge of honor, you know? He was a former select board member. He was also a lawyer, and he was one of these people who just thought, you know, I'm gonna keep filing complaints until they get it right. And one of his biggest complaints, for example, was um, he had a particular zoning board of appeals on his crosshairs. And the zoning board of appeals lost their longtime support staff person who prepared their minutes. And they went through a period where, you know, board members were doing their best to keep minutes. Then there's some changeover of like new staff comes in and nobody knows who's supposed to be preparing the minutes. Let's just say that next thing you know, the zoning board fell a full year behind in approving minutes. Okay? And this individual would file an open meeting law complaint almost like every thirty days, you know, well, you've got your next three meetings or thirty days to approve minutes. That's the, that's the standard for just um, open session meeting minutes. He would, you know, wait for a particular meeting date to occur. He'd count out your three meetings in thirty days and on day thirty-one or by meeting number four, he's filing his open meeting law complaint. And, you know, the chair of the board would get so frustrated with this, with this gentleman and say, you wanna be helpful and you got all this time to file these complaints? Why don't you volunteer to do our minutes for us? Oh, no, that was not his point. That, that was, you know, his point was this is your job and you need to learn how to do it. And that was his way of teaching a lesson. Not the most productive, you know, in my opinion, but. So meetings, I know you folks have been meeting remotely for several years now and I don't know if there will ever be a return to in-person meetings for you or not. Um, but one thing to bear in mind is that um, meetings have to be accessible. And this means accessible, whether it's a remote meeting or whether it's a physical meeting. Um, so for example, if you were meeting on the second floor of town hall and the only way to get to the second floor of town hall is via an elevator, and that elevator uh, suddenly uh, goes down and goes out of service, you've gotta move your meeting location. To someplace where, you know, somebody would be able, uh, with any sort of mobility challenges would be able to access it. So the same thing applies when you're having Zoom meetings. Now, if um, there is any kind of a technical glitch um, where folks suddenly can't get into the meeting or they were in the meeting and they, they got dropped from the meeting. Um, as soon as we become aware that there has been some kind of a technical glitch, we're supposed to pause the meeting, try to address whatever the glitch is. Maybe we all have to log out and log back in, um, or take a break while some IT person adjusts something somewhere. If we cannot fix that glitch, then we should adjourn the meeting and continue that discussion to another day and another time. Same thing that if you were meeting in person, you know, if um, if you couldn't, you know, if you were meeting on the second floor and that elevator went out of service and you couldn't find another location where um, it would be accessible to folks, then you'd have to reschedule that meeting to a date and a location where folks are able to get in and access the meeting. Um, these are just a couple of determinations. Throughout the, the slide deck, you'll see that periodically I include things that'll have this OML with a year and a number following it. These are actual open meeting law determinations that if you want to um, go on the Attorney General Division of Open Government website, and if you wanna look up any of those and say, gee, I wonder what really happened here. But this is just also to show you that this isn't just me preaching. Um, this is, this is actually based on some determinations that have come out of the Attorney General's office. Uh, your meetings, now I'm, I know that you guys are very good about this. Um, you have to post notice of your meetings and you have to post that notice forty-eight hours prior to the meeting date, not counting Saturdays, Sundays or legal holidays. You also um, have to, as you know, meet posting requirements under chapter forty-eight, the zoning act. Uh, which requires that you post notice of your hearings fourteen days prior somewhere conspicuous at town hall. You also uh, need to advertise in a local newspaper and send notice to a butters. Sometimes folks confuse the two, you know, that there's notice under chapter forty-eight, but then there's notice under the open meeting law. You've gotta make sure you've complied with both. Now, there's an exception to the forty-eight hours if you have an emergency. But the emergency has to be something that truly is an emergency and not just a oops, we forgot to post situation. Um, so typically it's some kind of public health or safety issue like a water main burst door. We saw a lot of emergency meetings um when COVID first hit. Um, I can't imagine too many planning board emergencies that would arise. Um, but let's suppose there was um, you know, an A and R that just came in, you know, at the last moment. Um, and we weren't going to meet again in that twenty-one day period. I personally would probably not consider that to rise to the level of an emergency. But if the board felt it was an emergency, you could go ahead, post that meeting um as quickly as possible with as much notice as you can give. And what I would also suggest is at the same time that you post that emergency meeting, post another regular meeting of the board with that full forty-eight hour notice. And the reason for posting that other meeting is in the event that there's a challenge that your meeting wasn't, didn't really qualify as an emergency. You can, at that other meeting that you've posted forty-eight hours later, you could vote to ratify all of the actions that were taken at the emergency meeting and sort of cure any defect that might exist.
Karen, uh Carolyn, I've got a follow-up question.
Sure.
With regard to physical access, um it wa- you described it, you know, with regard to doors and um access to rooms. What about access to actually documents? The, the federal government, when it produces documents, has something that they require they have to be five oh eight compliant. And um the short of that is there has to be a way for people with, say, um that are visibly impaired to be able to um have parts of the document read to them, described to them. I don't, I haven't heard of any of that um as applicable to the documents that we have um in front of us in our meetings or other similar, you know, town meetings um here uh outside the town or across the Commonwealth. And any, any, anything with regard to that either currently or poten- potentially in the future that could change?
So we, you know, it's a real, it's a good question, Kevin. Um, we, we don't have a requirement. So for example, when an applicant files for special permit, for example, you know, and they file it, you know, digitally with the board or a hard copy with, with, with the board and the clerk or whatever. Um, there is no requirement that that also be in some other type of format yet. I wouldn't be surprised if something like that um could come at a future date. It doesn't currently exist. What we are required to do under the open meeting laws, if we are aware, you know, if somebody, for example, um came to a meeting and if they were hearing impaired um or if they were blind or if they needed the assistance of an interpreter, we are supposed to make our best efforts to accommodate that person as best as we possibly can so that they have full access to the meeting and the materials that are being discussed at the meeting. But there's also, it's gotta be within reason. So, you know, if somebody logged on to this meeting tonight, you know, at, at six thirty and um requested an interpreter, for example, well, uh uh unless one of us just happens to be fluent in whatever the other language is, I don't know that we'd be able to accommodate that. Um, you know, spur of the moment like that. We need some sort of advance notice. I have had some folks who have other disabilities that um they actually prefer um virtual meetings because they are able perhaps to have captioning on um, you know, on their screens. They're able to enlarge font or, or zoom in on things. Or maybe uh they can, they can enhance um the audio so that they can hear it better than they might if they were, say, in attendance at, you know, a Town Hall meeting room. But right now, there isn't any requirement that, say, uh, you know, the A and R plan doesn't have to be in a particular format that, say, somebody who was um, you know, visually impaired would be able to access it. Instead, it would be up to that individual to get a copy of it and perhaps working through any software that they might have or through some assistance of others um to learn or to just have it described to them.
Okay, that's helpful to, to know. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, it doesn't come up very often and, you know, I suppose we should knock on wood somewhere that um uh, you know, that, that could really be a challenge for us someday if we, if we have a situation, but at the moment, we're okay. I'm gonna skip this because we have covered that about postings and we've covered this about emergencies. Your meeting notice, you guys do a pretty good job with your meeting notices. That, as you know, it has to include the date, time and place and the location of the meeting. Um, but it also has to include a list of topics that the chair reasonably anticipates discussing. Now, this is obviously is one of these things that seems to be a little bit obvious, particularly when it comes to land use boards. Because application comes in, application is put on the agenda. Um, if something is continued from one meeting to the next, Cassandra or Julia, whoever's preparing the, the uh meeting notices, they just know to put those things um in the hopper for the, for that date that of the continued hearing. What gets a little bit more fuzzy is when you have things um outside of, say, your public hearing items. You know, um, yeah, I haven't seen this as much recently, but you've had in the past like um liaison updates for various other committees or um, you know, maybe an update regarding uh the progress of the zoning bylaw committee. Things of that nature. If, you know, the, under the open meeting law, the chair is the person who is responsible for preparing that meeting notice. Even though it might be done mostly in conjunction with uh staff, it's still technically the chair who is responsible for it. And so if the chair knew, for example, that someone wanted to ta- bring up um a discussion about whether or not we should seek funding uh for updating the master plan, for example. Um, if you know that that topic is going to come up or that someone is going to raise that topic, it's supposed to be listed on the agenda. And we're not supposed to discuss things that technically are not placed on the agenda. That is not an absolute hard and fast rule. Um, sometimes there are exceptions that have to be made. So for example, if something was brought to your attention and I'll use the A and R plan example again, uh if you had a meeting posted for this evening and um someone late this afternoon filed a different A and R plan and Cassandra looked at your upcoming schedule and realized the board was not going to meet again um for four weeks and was not gonna have an opportunity uh to review that A and R plan uh unless you took it up at tonight's meeting. Cassandra could bring that to the chair's attention and the board could could entertain that newly filed A and R plan and could actually vote to endorse it or deny it. If it, you know, the best practice would be if you could have put that off to another meeting or if you could have gotten an extension from the applicant because the timing just wasn't going to work out based on your regular meeting schedule. Um, you know, it would always be best that if you can put it off and properly post it on a meeting notice, that's always going to be what is obviously the law requires. But sometimes there might be an exception and you have to act. Um, so rather than just uh forfeit the ability to um say approve or deny an A and R plan, you might decide, well, tonight's our only night, our only opportunity to take this up. So even though it's not on the agenda, we are gonna take this up tonight. And so be it. Now.
And, and A and R is the example here because they have to be acted upon within what timeframe?
Twenty-one days.
So Cassandra, no- knowingness um is very diligent and thankfully so with regard to our um meetings and whether we have the opportunity to um postpone or cancel them, I guess. And, and does so um with as much um thought as to what could come in um an opportunity to do so that we may not even anticipate before something gets canceled so we don't get ourselves into a bind. And I'm just calling that out because I wanna thank Cassandra for doing that and ask her to continue uh those efforts because um uh that's the only really thing that pops in front of us with that ticker, twenty-one days, these A and Rs? Yeah, okay.
Right, right, yeah. Bu- by and large, you vote, you know, something, something else gets filed, you usually have around sixty-five days before you have to open the public hearing and all that. So it's usually plenty of time, but um but yeah, I, I completely agree with you. Cassandra does a great job of, of keeping everything on time and moving for you guys, so.
And, and that's a state requirement that A and Rs have to be acted upon within twenty-one days or is that a town bylaw?
Nope, that is a state requirement. Your meeting notices also, not only do you have to list every topic you plan to discuss, but it's supposed to have sufficient specificity so that a reasonable member of the public would be able to take a look at your agenda and know what was going to be discussed. And I will not um embarrass any other um towns and planning boards out there, but I can tell you, you could do a search and you could find some planning board agendas that will say something like, you know, one thirty-five King Street, continued hearing. Well, what are we doing at one thirty-five King Street? You know, are they looking for a special permit? Are they, you know, what kind of a special permit? What provision of the bylaw? You know, what, what are they looking to do? Again, you guys do a great job of describing roughly what is being um, what is being proposed. So I would just say, keep up the good work. If at any point you start to look at the agendas and say, gee, can we get rid of some of this information? No, keep doing it exactly the way you're doing it because it really does comply with the law and um probably one of the reasons why uh you don't see very many open meeting law complaints. But to the extent that um you do use any kind of acronyms or abbreviations or certain references, try to refrain from doing that. So even say an A and R plan, I suppose there's somebody out there who doesn't necessarily know what that stands for. Um, so if we were to actually say an approval under the subdivision control on not required plan, you know, to subdivide right, you know, a lot into two, um that would be preferred. Similar thing like there, sometimes there's like abbreviations that might be used for referencing a board um or um sometimes like uh, you know, union names or something like that. We just use an abbreviation. Try to avoid that because other people in the public may not have any idea what that stands for. You don't, you typically don't use these generic placeholders of old business and new business. I know sometimes an agenda might say old business and have listed what the continued hearings are from the prior meeting. And then new business would list new applications that have come in. That's fine. Um, but believe me, there are actually some boards out there that will put on their agenda, old business, new business with nothing more so that you have absolutely no idea what's going to be discussed. So I'll say it again, just keep doing what you're doing. If something comes up after the meeting has been posted and you say, oh, I think we uh we forgot to put this on the agenda or something new has come in and I wanna have a conversation or, for example, you know, we're going into town meeting and um the planning board should take a vote on whether or not they're going to support, you know, Article Five at Town Meeting. Um, you can amend the agenda as many times as you want, once it's been posted. Um, every time that you amend it, you should make it like obvious to the public so that they don't have to compare and for themselves to try to identify, okay, what, what have they added? What have they taken off? So if you're gonna add something to the agenda and post an amended agenda, you might say um amended to add item number ten or amended to add discussion regarding, you know, one thirty-five King Street. Something that makes it obvious um to somebody in the public to see what the change actually is. Some boards will also um put a listing on the agenda. Um, they'll say, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair forty-eight hours in advance. You know, that is kind of just a catch-all, um in my opinion, CYA provision of well, I don't know what else anybody else might wanna bring up, so I'll just put this on the agenda in case there is something else. I don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other. I, I, I think if, if the open meeting law recommends or requires that you're supposed to put everything on that you reasonably do anticipate, I don't see what, i- isn't it just implied that anything else was not anticipated? Um, it's not a practice that, that this board has used, so I don't think we need to spend a whole lot of time on that. Executive sessions, um I'm gonna kind of uh slim this down in the interest of time because I think the only real executive sessions that this board is ever really gonna deal with um are most likely just going to be uh matters of litigation. There are, but just so that you're aware of it, there's only, I believe, ten purposes for convening an executive session um under state law and we have to make sure that the purpose for the discussion fits one of those ten uh reasons for an executive session. Um, I will tell you that, you know, obviously being a lawyer and representing public boards, yeah, there are conversations I would love to have with you sometimes without the cameras rolling or without, you know, members of the public present. But we can't have them unless uh we have one, we meet one of the, the ten purposes for having executive session. If we do need to have an executive session, I fully expect that either the chair or Cassandra is gonna reach out to me and talk to me about it to make sure that it qualifies. You still post it on the um, on an agenda in the normal manner. Um, but you do have to post the purpose for the executive session. So we can't simply say executive session. We would actually have to say um executive session pursuant to and insert purpose number from the statute and whichever one it is that applies. If it's litigation that we're gonna talk about, it's gonna be purpose number three. And then we should talk, we should include on the agenda roughly enough information that we can disclose. So if we were going into executive session, like for example, when we had um the cases off of Black Horse Lane with um, I think it was J A K LLC was the plaintiff in that case. Um, we listed the name of the case, the land court docket number, and we also mentioned the address of the property that it all pertained to whenever we had an executive session on that. When we go into executive session to discuss litigation, there's a further requirement that the chair has to make a determination that having the discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the board's litigating position. Um, and to me, this is something that's pretty straightforward. You know, if we're going to talk about our strategy as to whether or not we might be open to settling a case or heck, we're gonna fight this all the way to trial, that's clearly gonna have a detrimental effect on our litigating position if um the opposing party is able to watch the video and listen to our entire discussion as we map out our strategy. Um, so I can't even imagine when um it would not be appropriate to go into executive session for that purpose. If you're going to have a meeting where the only thing on the agenda is an executive session, you still have to post an open session and open your meeting in open session. Then you can have uh the motion to go into executive session and you can announce if there's no other business um to come before the board that night in public. You can let the public know that the board is going to be adjourning their meeting from um the executive session. You can let the public know that the board is going to be adjourning their meeting from the executive session. What's the purpose of that? Well, back in the, back in the not so long ago days, when we actually used to meet in, in person. You'd get members from the local press and you'd get members of the public who would show up and sit in the audience. And if you had an executive session, you know, at six-thirty, they would patiently wait in the room. Until you're done and expect you to come back in, but if you've got no other business to come before the board. Letting everybody know that we'd be adjourning from executive session says, go home. There's nothing, there's not gonna be anything to see here tonight, go home. Because we're not gonna be discussing anything further in open session. I've just covered that. You still have to take minutes in an executive session, the same rules apply. In terms of the information that needs to be contained in the minutes. This, these next couple of slides go through the various purposes for convening an executive session. Like I said, as it applies to a planning board, you know, unless we were talking about possibly. You know, acquiring some real property or leasing property or litigation. The only other purpose I could see that might come up is. You know, you had like a, a personnel issue, but most of that would be covered by. The town manager's office, so I think we've covered your, your reasons for executive session.
Carolyn, can I ask a question about? The minutes?
Sure.
So obviously the minutes need to be taken, at what point is it appropriate for the board to approve? Minutes that were taken at a prior executive session?
Good question. So I consider approval of executive session minutes to sort of be a two-step process. One is the board could almost immediately after the executive session has happened. The board could approve those minutes, meaning. The board is looking at them and determines that the minutes accurately reflect who was there, what was voted upon and what was discussed. That doesn't mean those minutes get released to the public, however. That means we all agree that they're accurate. Then the next question becomes, are they ready to be released to the public? So, for example, one of the, the analyses you go through is. Has the purpose for which the executive session was held, has it resolved, is it done? So if we were talking about litigation. Once the case either settles or once the case has gone through trials and appeals. And the case is finally adjudicated. Then those executive session minutes could be released to the public because the purpose is then done. But there may also be, just because the purpose for the executive session has, has concluded. There may still be information contained in the executive session minutes. That might not be. Public for purposes of the public records law. So let's say, for example. There was. You know, some litigation that was ongoing. But there was something that was particularly sensitive in that litigation. That it wasn't just, for example, wasn't just somebody appealing a denial of a special permit. But it also alleged. You know, let's say some type of, of harassment. And bias on the part of, say, a board member or with respect to an applicant. It may very well be that some of that information, because it might be. Related to a specifically named individual or it might be otherwise protected. By, say, another statute, which might be the right to privacy or, or some other statute. We'd look at them to make sure, is there anything in there that should be redacted? So again, this isn't something necessarily that comes up often in the land use context. But, you know, for example, let's take, you know, the select board, for example. They might have an executive session to consider whether or not an employee should be disciplined. And then ultimately, the employee is either disciplined. Or the, the vote is that discipline is not warranted. While the purpose for the executive session is now resolved. But that person who is the subject of that executive session. Still has a right to privacy, particularly in what is considered. Their confidential personnel file, you know, like I was disciplined for doing X, Y, or Z at work. That information is never gonna see the light of day, so there might be redacted minutes. That get released to the public and that are so heavily redacted that nobody knows. Who we're talking about or what the nature of the allegations were. And that's simply because now the public records law has kicked in. So if you've got a backlog at all of like executive session minutes. My, my suggestion would be that, that Cassandra, you and I would connect about that just to make sure. Yep, I mean, if it's litigation related, you're gonna know that the litigation is over. But was there anything that was said in those minutes that might otherwise not be. Public and I'd be happy to look at those and help you with that.
Okay, and those should be approved in. If not, like at the moment of the executive session in another executive session?
Exactly, so you can go into executive session to review and approve executive session minutes. Particularly where the, the matter is still ongoing, right? Because otherwise, that would defeat the whole purpose of having an executive session in the first place, but yes, you can do that.
Okay.
So, we've got any instances of that, let me know and we can kind of walk through the mechanics of it.
There might be a couple sets of minutes that haven't been approved.
Out there, right?
Quick, quick other questions, so like you, you talked about. The strategy, you know, and kind of in, in case of a litigation. Would that also be falling under reduction, you know, kind of. Like not letting the public know in hindsight what your strategy was? Would you take that out? And, and then the other question is, you know, kind of. Where would those minutes, you know, kind of be stored? So like, would we be able to, to look at the full version somewhere? And the public would be looking at another version, you know, and kind of the redacted one somewhere.
Right. Yep, so. To answer your first question, would I likely redact, you know, discussion from the minutes about strategy? I think it would, would depend, I'd, I'd really have to look at it, I mean, if we were having a discussion about. You know, an appeal of a special permit, for example. And if the discussion in executive session was. How we respond to discovery requests or that we're gonna be filing a motion. Asking the court to, you know, find that. You know, in the planning board's favor, blah, 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 I don't think. After the fact, you know, once the case is finally been adjudicated. I don't think that there's a basis to necessarily withhold that kind of discussion. About the strengths and weaknesses of the case, because quite frankly. Most of that is going to be contained in the papers that get filed with the court. Is it, so it's probably rather unlikely that there's gonna be some redacted information. In planning board executive session minutes, but I'll, I'll never say never. But to your point, let's assume there is something that is particularly sensitive and. Under the public records law is deemed not to ever be something that should be disclosed to the public. You, and by you, I guess I really mean Cassandra or, you know, somebody in the office. Needs to safeguard the unredacted version of those minutes. And the redacted approved version of the minutes that are released to the public. Those are supposed to be on file with the town clerk's office. Some towns have gotten in the habit also of, and I know you folks are, you know, are one of them. That you could put the minutes on your website so that it's just easier to refer people if they're. Looking for minutes where, you know, you've discussed. Whatever project, they can do a search and they can find those minutes that way. But if there were redactions that were made, someone has to keep the master copy of those minutes. Someplace where they're safe and not disclosed to the public. I don't know, Cassandra, if you've got any insight on that or if the, if you're aware of where those are kept. Say on behalf of the planning board or maybe the issue has not come up before?
Yeah, I don't think the issue has come up before, but I mean, I have folders that are. Organized that would contain any minutes.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Barry.
Yeah, and, and we, like the board, we would be able to, you know, refer to them to. The original full version at any time, correct?
You as board members, just, you don't have access to those folders, but like if you emailed me and requested a copy, like I could share that with you.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's all I wanted to know.
But, but we would have access to what was posted to the members of the public, like. Then they go on with the meeting and the agenda and you can track back for years if you're really interested in what was said. Seven years ago, it, sometimes you can find it.
Yep, thank you.
How long do set records need to be retained?
Forever. Minutes have to be retained forever.
Like the clerk keeps a copy in the, in the, the safe, right? Like a paper copy and then there's an electronic copy that goes to Stone Mountain.
There should be, I, I don't know specifically what, what Lisa does. But most clerks, yeah, you're right, they've got a hard copy usually kept in some sort of climate controlled vault. And then usually there's a, there's a backup electronic copy too, just in case there's a. You know, a, a, an earthquake or a flood or something that, that befalls town hall. I'm gonna skip ahead a little bit in the interest of time since you've been doing remote meetings. And doesn't look like you're going to be ceasing them anytime soon. Just to let you know that the COVID extension of remote meetings has. Been kicked out to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven. Who knows, stay tuned, I fully expect that the legislature will extend that again because. They seem to like this idea of remote meetings, but they can't figure out how to make that a permanent part of the law. You do all of this for your remote meetings, so. I'll just say, continue to do so. One thing that I know this happens when you do log in, like I know when I logged in tonight. When you're having remote meetings and they're being recorded, we're supposed to announce. That, that the meeting is being recorded, like I said, Zoom provides that for you. If you are in a physical meeting. You know, physically in attendance and the meeting was being recorded, we're still supposed to announce to the public that it is being recorded. Or if somebody, if the meeting wasn't being recorded, but maybe a member of the audience wanted to record the meeting for whatever reason. And asked the chair to do so, the chair is required to make an announcement if the meeting is to be recorded. And that's simply just because of the wiretap statute that. Nobody's voice should be recorded without them being made aware that it's being recorded. You still do this as far as when you do your roll call and announce who's present, so, so. Keep doing what you're doing in terms of, you know, announcing. Who's actually present during your remote meetings and all of your votes are taken by roll call. We have talked about technical issues, no private chat. You know, again, back before COVID when we actually used to sit around a table and meet. Sometimes you'd see one member lean over to another member whisper. Or, you know, there was the note that gets slid across the, the table to another board member. You, none of that is supposed to happen. In a meeting similarly, just because we're all meeting remotely, we should not be privately texting or chatting with each other. Through some other means to kind of indicate, I'm not gonna vote for this and I, you know, and. I hope you, you join me in opposing this application. Everything that you discuss is supposed to be discussed publicly so the public can hear it.
So our meetings are regularly recorded? Or is that just done by, you know, Amy's got this thing being recorded by her Circle app right now? But is it being recorded by Cassandra for meeting minutes purposes?
Yes, so all of your meetings are recorded and they're posted on the town's YouTube page later on.
So that, that announcement that you get at the very beginning would satisfy that requirement. One other thing I do want to just talk about with respect to minutes, we've already covered a lot of it. But your minutes are also supposed to include a list of the documents used at the meeting. So that means anything that is presented to the board. So obviously the applications that you receive, but also anything that is either. Identified or discussed in some way by the board at a meeting is technically a document used at your meeting. And it is supposed, that, that document is supposed to be listed in the minutes. So typically the end of minutes for any particular meeting. There will then be a section that says, you know, list of documents used. And it'll list, you know, the application and whatever else was submitted or letters of support or letters of an opposition, et cetera. If you were, again, meeting in person. And folks used to like to just walk up to the podium and say, I have something here that I'd like to present to the board and then they would hand out. You know, copies to the board members, that would also be a document. Used at the meeting that would have to be noted in the minutes and a copy of all of those documents used has to be retained as well.
Right now, we have, on the planning board page, we have an active applications tab. And all the documents are listed there at the time of the public hearings. Whether they've been changed or not, but not in addition, is it a part of our. A part of our agenda, but Cassandra, do they show up in the meeting minutes?
Yes, so I include all the documents for every application in the meeting minutes.
Not by reference, by inclusion?
So in the meeting minutes, there's. Like sections per application and it'll list like who is in attendance for the applicant. You know, whether it be an attorney or an engineer or the applicant themselves. And then immediately after that, I'll list every document that is used for that application.
Okay, so I think we've covered previously approval of minutes at either the next three meetings. Over than thirty days, whichever is longer. One other question that I've gotten periodically is, well, the minutes are just in draft form, they haven't been approved by the board yet. The moment they are actually in draft form, they're considered a public record and they can be released if somebody requests them. Obviously, that's not the case for executive session minutes. But open session minutes could be released to the public as soon as they're created. If they're still in draft form, you can stamp, you know, put the, the watermark draft in the background. Or literally mark them draft on each page, but they could be shared with the public even though they haven't been approved. or literally mark them draft on each page, but they could be shared with the public even though they haven't been approved yet. So this um clerk, this goes to your opening comment about, you know, what you're supposed to do upon, you know, being elected or appointed and taking the oath of office and you're supposed to get a copy of the and cer- and certify that you have received your open meeting law materials. From what I understand from town clerks now that this is being done um online. So that clerks are supposed to be able to go on and see any particular board members that have yet to um certify that they have received their open meeting law materials. Every once in a while, you get somebody out there who on a board who either just forgets or puts it off, puts it off deliberately or, or otherwise. Um, and failing to actually certify that you've received all of these materials could also be an open meeting law violation, so you know, that's the hook for certifying that you've received all this information. Complaints, you guys have not received any open meeting law complaints and I'm gonna uh just skip ahead this because um I just want you to take away that if someone files an open meeting law complaint against the board, it has to be filed with the board and it has to be filed on a form that the Attorney General's Office has created for this purpose. We only have fourteen business days up from receipt to respond to the complaint. So I'm going to assume that if an open meeting law complaint's ever filed against the planning board, I'm going to assume that Cassandra, you might be likely the, the first person to see it. Please let me know and send me a copy so that I can, number one, make sure that the board's gonna be able to meet. Um, to provide a response within the fourteen business days. Um, and make sure that we put it on a, a meeting agenda because we are required to meet and discuss and put that response together. Now, most of the time I have done so many of these responses over the years that most of the time I do a pretty good job of being able to just see what the nature of the complaint is, see what the board did or review your agenda or review your meeting um video. Um, that I can put a pretty decent response together um in preparation for your meetings. So that we can have a discussion and finalize that response. But the takeaway here is if a complaint comes in, please let me know so we can act on it quickly. Um, cause one of the things the folks, I, I did an open meeting law training last week uh for another community and the town manager said, so what? Yeah, so we don't comply with the open meeting law, so what? All right, well, the so what is, well, um if we're fined to have violated the open meeting law. Um, yeah, the first couple of times are probably just gonna be a slap on the wrist or a requirement that the board undergo um open meeting law training like this again. Um, and maybe that we also uh certify to the Attorney General's Office that the training was held and who, who went to it. Um, but the Attorney General also has the power to impose a fine if uh she finds it's an intentional violation. This is not done frequently, but I can tell you that one of my other towns, um they've been hit with an intentional fine. And um just last week, there was another determination that was issued. Also finding it to be an intentional violation for that board, um so there, you know, can be consequences for it. The Attorney General can also nullify any action that you take at a meeting if that meeting was held in violation of the open meeting law. And um most recently, I think the thing that was the most um egregious in this area was the town of Nantucket hired a new planner or planning director. And however they went about doing it, they did not comply with the open meeting law. There was an open meeting law complaint filed and the Attorney General undid the appointment of that planner. Town of Nantucket had to do the whole process all over again um and do it right. Um, but the point being, you don't wanna wind up in a situation where we're, we're dealing with those kinds of headaches, so that's the so what part of this. Couple more determinations, if you um have insomnia some night and want to read them. Uh, they're there for you and a couple of the, the website resources that are also available. So the other topic that we are supposed to cover this evening is the conflict of interest. And um I'm mindful of the time and but I also wanna say this about the conflict of interest law. It is incredibly fact specific. And um just because something might appear to you outwardly to possibly be a conflict of interest may not necessarily be a conflict of interest when you really get into the weeds of it and realize that, oh, well, there might be um some nuances that were not immediately obvious to us. But I do wanna cover the, the big things, uh the takeaways that, that I think are gonna be most applicable to your board. If there is any sort of a question as to whether or not you might have a conflict of interest. Um, I would strongly suggest that you either contact me to talk with me about it in advance. Or um if you don't wanna contact me or can't contact me or um you'd rather go through the State Ethics Commission. The State Eth- Ethics Commission has an attorney of the day that is um will ca- return your phone call the same day. You might not wanna put it off until, you know, four fifteen, because you probably won't get a call back that day. Um, but if there's something coming before you and you're not exactly sure whether or not it is something that you should or can participate in. You can certainly call the um Attorney General's um helpline and you can talk to them confidentially and they will typically give you sort of a verbal response based on what you have said. Um, likewise, you can also, if you feel comfortable, you could also reach out to me. And um, you know, I can, I could guide you in that way as well. One thing that happens from time to time is that a board member will participate in something and then after the fact they'll disclose, ooh. That was my second cousin twice removed who's an applicant there or I had a financial interest in that business once, but I don't work for them anymore, blah, blah, blah. Um, the law does allow for certain disclosures to dispel the appearance of a conflict of interest. But you have to do it in advance, you can't do it after the fact. Um, but the best thing I can, the best piece of advice I can give is if there's anything that you're not sure of, please ask in advance that we can make sure that you don't wind up um doing something that you shouldn't have done and that we cannot um correct after the fact. Sometimes folks also confuse, if you have a conflict, you must abstain from, or sorry, you must recuse yourself from participating in that matter. If you just have an appearance of a conflict, but not an actual conflict. You can still participate in the matter, but you might wanna make a public notice that just want everyone to know, for example, that I used to work for Merrill Engineering. Um, I haven't worked for Merrill Engineering for more than eight months and I never worked on this particular project, but I note that the engineer of record coming before today and presenting this application is from Merrill Engineering. You make that kind of a statement, you have no financial interest in it. It's not a member of your family member, it's not an immediate family member who's involved. Then by making that public statement, you've dispelled the notion of any kind of a, an appearance of a conflict of interest. Abstention is not the same thing as recusal. So abstention is something that you voluntarily do for your own personal reasons. Recusal is if you have a conflict, you cannot participate in this matter. So if you have a conflict, you must recuse yourself. And recusal means, especially in the Zoom world, it means you leave the meeting room. You don't sit there and listen to everything that's going on, you literally need to just remove yourself from the discussion entirely. So in the Zoom world, I'd say if you, if you need to recuse yourself due to a conflict, when the application is called, you would announce, I'm gonna, not gonna be participating in this matter um because I have a conflict of interest and you literally log out. Cassandra or somebody will send you a text when it's time to log back in for the other matters. Um, so let's talk about some of the things that the conflict of interest law prohibits us from doing. Um, and I've given you the sections of the law again, if you have any desire to go and actually read them. But w- we are, we are considered municipal employees, even though you might say, well, I'm not a municipal employee. Um, an elected official. The definition is broad, it includes appointed or elected officials, regardless of whether or not you are compensated for your position, you are still a municipal employee. You cannot act as an agent for any other entity other than the municipality. So except in some very limited circumstances, um so for example, I had in another town, I had a member of an Economic Development Commission who was proposing a zoning change on behalf of a property owner. Um, going to the planning board hearing and advocating that particular change and also going to uh the select board who appointed the Economic Development Commission and advocating support for that zoning amendment. As an Economic Development Commission member, that she, that person was a municipal employee. They cannot act as an agent for a private property owner um before any other town board. Um, that's your, you know, your allegiance is supposed to be to the town, not to other parties. You're not supposed to participate in any matter in which you have a financial interest. So this could be um, you know, employment contract or a business um uh that you or an immediate family member has a financial interest in. Immediate family member is also specifically defined in the statute. Um, typically it is your spouse, your parent, your child. Um, and your spouses, parents and children, it does not include cousins, for example. So be mindful of any of your family members that might be coming before the board for a different matter. One exception I do wanna point out for you those, you are always able to advocate for yourselves. So if you had to appear, say, before the Conservation Commission because you're putting an addition on your house and there are wetlands and you need permission from them. Um, your loyalties are not divided, simply you are allowed to represent your own personal property interests before a board. But you couldn't do it, say, on behalf of your neighbor um while serving as a planning board member. There are prohibitions against holding multiple positions. I don't know of many planning board members that also hold another position within the town, so I'm, I'm gonna just uh skip over that, but just be aware of it in the event that someone asks you um to serve on, say, another board or asks you uh you know, to plow snow this winter because everybody's always, there's always a shortage of snow plow operators, for example. Um, be mindful that holding another position could particularly, could present a conflict for you. Um, and when we've talked about just acting in a way that might give the appearance of a conflict of interest. So like, for example, in my uh cousin example earlier, your cousin is not a member of your immediate family. But everybody knows that this particular applicant is your cousin. You can simply make an announcement at the outset of the meeting. This is, you know, this is Joe, Joe's my cousin, I wanna be, I want everyone to know that um, you know, I looked at the conflict of interest law and uh Joe is not a member of my immediate family, so I am allowed to continue to participate and vote on Joe's application. That's all you need to do as far as that is, uh the code is concerned. I have covered most of this, um a special municipal employee, I'm not gonna spend too much time on. That would be a specific designation that the select board would have to vote relative to the planning board. And essentially, if the planning board was designated as special municipal employees, that would allow members of the planning board to also hold other positions in town government. But I don't think we need to spend more time on that. Um, the code of conduct, we've covered. The conflict of interest also uh prohibits us from receiving anything of substantial value. And substantial value is defined as fifty dollars. And the idea is supposed to be that you are not supposed to receive something from anyone of substantial value that is given to you or solicited by you. As a quid pro quo, you know, gee, if you could get me, you know, tickets to um to the playoff games, I'm sure I can find my way to approve your special permit application. No, that's clearly um, you know, soliciting something of value, it's arguably also a bribe. Um, so we've got to avoid um that kind of behavior. Certain gifts, there is an exception. Um, again, kind of similar to when we're talking about the open meeting law and everybody showing up at, you know, a retirement party. Uh, let's suppose um somebody was getting married, somebody has a baby, you know, some other kind of an occasion where um you wanna go and buy a gift for that person and maybe the gift is valued at, you know, fifty one dollars. Um, that doesn't constitute a conflict of interest to receive or to give a gift to somebody. If it is, you know, based on some sort of like a personal relationship like that and not because you are expecting some kind of um, you know, quid pro quo in exchange for that gift. We've talked about acting as an agent and receiving money. I've said you can always advocate for yourself. Um, financial interest, now here's, here's one thing I do wanna emphasize um as members of land use boards. So um if an applicant were, an application were to come in and you are considered a, in a butter or in a butter to in a butter within three hundred feet. Um, you are presumed to have a financial interest in the outcome of that application. Regardless of whether it is a positive or a negative impact, so for example, I often hear in the forty B context, oh, you put that multifamily apartment housing uh down the street from me and my property value is going to go down. Well, regardless of whether your property value is going to go up by virtue of whether or not a project gets approved or your property value plummets if a project is approved. Either way, that's considered having a financial interest in the outcome of that particular project. So if you are in a butter or in a butter to in a butter, you must recuse yourself from participating in any matter. Uh, because it is presumed it could impact um your property value and therefore your financial interests.
Yep.
Enforcement.
Girl, just, just without a butter um question, but if and, and we as the rest of the board could not, you know, um how to say, like, um relieve that person um of its, you know, and kind of of his or her butter status and say like, yeah, we hear you, um you announced it, it's fine, you can still, you know, kind of continue.
No, um, if, if somebody is, you know, in a butter. Um, they are absolutely presumed to have a conflict of interest, so in that situation. Now, let's, let's assume it's a, a situation that requires a super majority vote of the board. And if one member is down, if one member is down, we've got four remaining. As you know, Barrett, we recently, you were the associate member, so that would be a perfect opportunity to slide the associate member in as the fifth member of the board. I understand we don't have an associate member at the moment, but um that would be one way to, to deal with it is have the associate step in. Um, the other way to deal with it is if you're down to just a four member board. Um, the other way to deal with it is if you're down to just a four member board. And uh the particular type of zoning relief that's being sought requires. All four members to vote in favor of it, well, then the applicant simply has to get a unanimous vote.
So it's really a strict recuse. Recusal.
It is absolute straight recusal. There is nothing that the board can say or do. Um, because whether you approve that project or you deny that project. Um, it could influence your property value positively or negatively, so it's an absolute conflict. If, for example. If, for example, that it wasn't a, you weren't in a butter, but like I said, it's your. Uh, your, your second cousin once removed, if that's even a thing, I don't know. Um, but if it was your second cousin who was the applicant. And everybody knows, oh, you're part of this, you know, this big family with lots of cousins. The, the, you know, the board member could disclose, like I said, that's my cousin Vinny, who's the applicant. But my cousin Vinny isn't a member of my immediate family, so therefore I don't have to recuse myself from participating.
Unless he lives next door.
Right. Now, if you have a situation where you've got, you know, you're currently only have five members, no alternates. And let's suppose um, an application is received. And let's suppose two of you happen to be a butters to this project. And it requires, so you're down to two members having to recuse themselves. And the application requires an affirmative vote of four members. We may have to invoke what we call the rule of necessity. Which would be, which essentially is a way of publicly announcing that. Unless these board members who do have a financial interest in the outcome of this application. Unless they participate. We cannot achieve the quantum of vote necessary to approve this project. Um, so the project's gonna just be deemed denied simply because we don't have enough members. Um, we could invoke the rule of necessity. Which would essentially require, you know, a disclosure to the public of. Although these two board members do have a conflict. They are going to participate because without their participation. We don't have the required number of, of members to vote on the application. Um, that does not happen very often. I've had it happen once in twenty some odd years. So if that should happen to um, present itself here again, let's. Talk about it far enough in advance so that we can take the steps necessary to do the proper disclosure. And um keep the process rolling. It may even be that the best way to handle it would be to um. Very quickly appoint an associate member to the planning board so that nobody is put in that position. Of, of having to choose um between, you know, conflict versus participating because there's no other option. Similar to when we're talking about, you know, why do we have to comply with the open meeting law? Well. Conflict of interest law is a little more serious in terms of the penalties. People can make complaints to the State Ethics Commission. The Ethics Commission has the ability to investigate complaints and staff to investigate complaints. Um, they can do it sort of informally by um. Interviewing you um, or it could actually go to a, a hearing process before the Ethics Commission. Often, um, what I have seen happen is that um, there will be an investigation done. You will, you, if you are the subject of that investigation, you know, will be contacted. And you'll be interviewed, as will other people. Um, and usually the Attorney General's Office, or sorry, the Ethics Commission, they try to reach. Like a consent agreement with the individual rather than go through the whole public hearing process. Um, but I have seen it go both ways. I have seen um. Several officials over the years be fined as much as ten thousand dollars for an ethics violation. Um, and those are, you know, paid out of your individual pockets because. That conflict is personal to you. It's not something that the town of Cohasset created or that the town of Cohasset is. Going to reimburse you for. So there can be some serious financial consequences. So that's why I'd say if there's ever something that presents itself, please let me know or the Ethics Commission know. So that we can try to guide you as best as possible to stay out of trouble. The Ethics Commission can also um seek criminal penalties. In court if uh they think the infraction is, you know, so egregious. So I'm gonna remain optimistic that we never have to have any conversations of that sort. But I wanted you to be aware as a potential um possibility. And here are some other um sources and websites you can go to for some more information. Uh, pertaining to the ethics law um or disclosure forms if you're ever told to file a disclosure. Or um, you know, the attorney of the day, that sort of thing. So all of that. Kind of wraps this up this evening, but I'm happy to answer any other questions you folks might have.
Thank you, Carolyn.
That was great.
Well, thank you. I feel like I hate doing these things by Zoom. I feel like I drone on it all. So thank you for asking questions. And breaking it up along the way. Um, but I think it, I think it's, makes it a little bit more interesting.
It's very useful, but, but anytime we think we might have a conflict of interest. Or an ethics thing, we should just go to council first or the E- Ethics Commission.
Right, right. And like I said, I can't tell you how many times I've been about to walk into a meeting. And someone will pull me aside and will say, you know, so and so's got a conflict. Like, do they? You know, uh, because, you know, at, at six twenty-five P M. That's really not a good time for someone to spring this on me like I'm gonna be able to work through it all right here and now. And, and most of the time when someone else is saying that somebody has a conflict. I'm not so sure there's a real there when you, when you start to drill down into it a little bit.
I mean, I'm, I'm probably the most likely person on the board to have a conflict of interest because. I'm a professional architect that steers projects. Not before the planning board, but um, but, but definitely steers projects, so.
Right, so that's always gonna be something you've gotta be sensitive to.
Yeah, good thing. Yeah, good thing.
Well, thank you, Carolyn. Um, thank you, Cassandra, for setting this up and coordinating with Carolyn. We appreciate your um availing yourself for this and you can do this annually, right? I, I, I have vague recollections of you presenting this probably by Zoom to me tapping in some other time, a year plus ago, so.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Carolyn, uh, no, um, um, I asked at uh the beginning of the meeting as well. Um, Cassandra, would you please be so kind to share this set of slides with us so that we can follow up on all the. Good links if we need to.
Yes, I have it on my list of things to do tomorrow that I will share this. Um, and then I think Amy had a question as well.
Uh, yeah, will this be posted um such that we will be able to hear the discussion that you presented?
The recording of the meeting? Yes, so Kevin will post that, um, probably not tomorrow. Uh, but at some point it will be posted, just like all of your other meetings to the town's YouTube page.
Great, great, because it's, you know, it's a so much work and so much information. That um anybody else that's thinking about this topic really could be directed initially to it. And then if that is insufficient to request further elaboration on particular points. Because I think that um, we don't really have the. We, we are such a small town and we also are pretty honest. And we have enough people watching us so that we wanna be a good citizen. But I think for people that, that actually don't understand the process at all, it would be a very valuable teaching tool.
Absolutely.
Over to you, Clark.
Well, it's out there. If anyone wanna second Clark's motion, um, thank you all for uh lasting through this. And again, thank you, Carolyn, and uh thank you, Cassandra.
Thank you, folks, for, for participants. I appreciate it.
Alright, I will second the notion, um, so we'll conclude them um in a meeting to adjourn uh for this planning board meeting, October fifteenth. Twenty twenty-five. Thank you all. I don't know. Let's do a roll call.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin Hine, aye.
And Boogit Midvish, aye.
Alright, meeting adjourned.
Bye, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Bye, Cassandra.